I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Bellzah. Bellzah.
Here.
Plistic.
Present.
Gustafson.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum. It takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of the general nature. This is an opportunity for the public to make a comment or ask any questions on any issue. Does not have to be an agenda item although it could, and there's a three-minute limit. Would anybody like to address the council on anything at this time? If none, we'll move to the approval of the minutes. I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the April 6, 2020 City Council meeting. Moved by Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Sullivan. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Kenny.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Bellzah.
Aye.
Plistic.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The minutes are approved. Receiving the communications, do any of the aldermen have communications they'd like to share with the council? Alderman Clistex.
Thank you, Mayor. I received 12 emails with regards to the signature that we're looking at putting in, Item P. I received two yes emails from Mary Moore, Scott, and Betty Olusar. I received 10 emails no from Jerry Legansky, Karen Pervsick, Gary Scarboza, Jack McDonald, Kripa Shriram, Pam Walgos, Cheryl Scarboza, Mrs. Kleifkin, Ed Kohler, and Steve Berwin. I also received an email from Ronald Hasta, 8,000 block of Sawyer Road with regards to concrete sinking in. I'll forward that email for Dan to take a look, and all other details I'll forward to Diane to put in the...
Anyone else? If no one else has, I have several communications. As you know, we received $3,000 in gift cards from Christopher D. Burke Engineering. And what we did is, we decided to provide $1,500 in gift cards for Our Lady of Mount Carmel. Alderman Sullivan brought those over there and presented those to Father Mike or whoever was in charge. And we did $1,500 to Our Lady of Peace, and I made that presentation to Father Mark Barron. I just wanted to say that I have two thank yous. A thank you from Our Lady of Peace for our $500 donation. Again, thank you for your generosity and generosity, and may God bless you for your support for the food pantry ministry. And then Father Mike writes, "By behalf of the parish, family of Our Lady of Mount Carmel, and the clients of the food pantry, thank you for selecting us to distribute the $1,500." And they go on to thank Christopher D. Burke. So I wanted to read both of those tonight. That was very nice. Excellent gesture on the part of Christopher Burke. And I'm sure that our businesses appreciated that, and I'm sure that the food pantries appreciated that as well. Anyone else?
Joe?
Yes.
Mayor, thank you. And just to kind of piggyback on your statement, obviously, they were given to those two institutions because they are working food pantries in our community. I'm very involved in the food pantry at Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church. Typically, it's open for operations four times a week where we give, you know, a complete, usually grocery cart full of lots of non-perishable and perishable items. We have partnered with the Northern Illinois Food Bank. So people leave there with a great deal of food, and we've been fortunate enough to have cleaning products and paper towels, toilet paper. And right now, the pantry, because of staffing, is open twice a week. But we have been quite busy, and people have been very receptive. And I can't say enough how grateful they are for the extra gift of the $50 gift card. It has been very extra exciting for them to receive that, and they're so appreciative. And if people want to drop off any donations to the food pantry, they need to do it during the time pantry's open, from Tuesdays from 1:00 to 3:00, and Fridays from 1:00 to 3:00, since the church is otherwise closed. But the community that we serve, which is, you know, beyond the parish, is all-encompassing, and they can come as often as they need to now. There's no restrictions, was extremely grateful.
Last week, I sent an email to Andrew Brunson, President of the Lions Club, Erica Giuffre, who is the president of the Women's Club, and to Joan Wayman, who's the president of the Rotary. And I advised all of them that if they would really like to help out, the food pantries could really use their help. And I advised them that if they would go out and buy these gift cards, they would be helping our businesses. And at the same time, they would be helping those that they serve in the food pantry. Erica got back to me and told me the Women's Club would look into it in terms of their end-of-the-year donations. Joan's, the Rotary has already made those donations. And Andrew Brunson indicated to me that the Lions Club Board of Directors was going to be looking at taking money from their foundation and spreading it out over a number of those restaurants, and then donating those gift cards. So there was a very positive response to that request. All right. If there's nothing else, I'd like to move on to the mayor's report. I have a couple items tonight. The Census Bureau has received approval to further suspend the utilization of Census 2020 field operatives until June of 2020. The Bureau has asked Congress to provide a 120-day calendar extension to deliver finalized counts to the White House and Congress. This extension will help ensure that Illinois and all other states are accurately and completely counted. They didn't want the census workers going out in the midst of this pandemic, so they've extended that until June of 2020. And the Congress doesn't get this till the end of the year, so they've extended that by 120 days. As of Saturday, April 18th, here in Darien, we were at 68% counted, and we're still looking to get into the 85th to 90th percentile. So we're doing well, and I just wanted to update everybody on that. I also have an Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Joseph A. Marques, Mayor of the City of Darien, do hereby proclaim this April 24, 2020, as Arbor Day in the City of Darien, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. I would also like to mention that Heidi Ramirez, who has done a lot of work on this, has asked that to commemorate Arbor Day, since we can't plant trees on that day, that you would put a picture of a tree or a butterfly in your front window on this Friday, which is April 24. That request came through this afternoon. I don't know, Mayor, if you were aware of that. But Pike is asking that we ask residents to do that in honor of Arbor Day.
Yes, Mayor, I relayed that on Heidi's behalf. Heidi Ramirez has become the new Tree Lady. As many of our community knows, you featured Kathy Minardi with the Heart of Darien Award recently. And she has been instrumental in the 20-plus years of Arbor Day in Darien. And, you know, it is sad that we are not able to gather this Friday and release butterflies and have music and celebrate like we always have. But they do plan on the trees that were intended to be placed this year, the memorial trees, and they had a couple of them. They will be done next year, and obviously, more will be added to it. But as Mayor Marques said, making some type of gesture in your window or maybe even tying, you know, a ribbon around a tree. But if you could, you know, mark the day on Friday as Arbor Day, and I know that they would appreciate it. And there will be some photos shared, hopefully through direct connect and other ways as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I have another thing to read. DuPage Mayor's, through the DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference, will be conducting a virtual meeting regarding our setting up a transition plan that we'll be sharing with the governor's office. While each of us has responded to the coronavirus pandemic in similar ways, there have been differences in the way we each have mitigated this crisis. We want to continue sharing ideas that deal with our businesses reopening so that there is consistency to our actions. Our Darien rebatement proposal that you're voting on tonight was shared with the other DuPage mayors last week, and several of them are exploring similar programs for their business communities. And the reason I mention this is that we received some emails from people wanting to know when I'm going to announce Darien's reopening. And I wanted people to understand that I can't do anything individually that I have been working with. We have to follow the governor's directive. But we in DuPage County are working together to come up with plans that are similar so that each community is doing similar things. I hope that answers that individual's question. I also wanted to say, it now appears that based on the governor's order that all of our schoolchildren will be finishing off their school year through e-learning. While this has and will continue to impact families in different ways, I'm also concerned with the loss of closure rituals, such as graduations for the members of the class of 2020. As a former instructor and high school administrator, I know how important it was for our graduates and their families to celebrate these rites of passage. It is my hope that our Darien students, be they high school or elementary, public or private, have an opportunity to celebrate their achievements with their classmates and families. If this is not possible, I would like to offer my personal congratulations to all of our graduates. And I will be doing this in a video that I will share via our direct connect. I would ask that leaders of Darien's civic and service organizations, educational institutions, and governmental bodies do likewise by completing a five-to-10-second video. I think that that would be something that would show that all of us in our community appreciate the work that these young people have done. In the meantime, I would offer our graduates one message that remember that every day of your life you are creating a legacy that will help define you. With or without a graduation ceremony, you are the best directors of your future. So best wishes, and we are very proud of you. And that ends my mayor's report. That takes us to the city clerk's report, Joanne.
I have one item. For all those who were requested to complete the economic interest statements for both DuPage County and the City of Darien, your response is due on or before May 1. The county will be contacting us here at the office to tell us who is in arrears. So please fill out your forms and turn them in. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. Our city administrators report, Brian? No report. Department?
Mike.
Mike?
Joanne, I never got mine from the county. Did the county send those out?
They were sent via email, Mike. We always see them via email.
Okay, I never got that. Is there any, should I contact them to...
Let me check with Maria, and we'll handle it from there.
I did get it.
Yeah, Mike, this is Eric. I never got mine either.
Who's that?
And, Joanne?
Yes.
This is Mary. I've not gotten mine. I got the one from the city, but I did not get mine from the county.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Police Department, department report, Chief Thomas.
You have it there with you? There's a little less crime due to the everybody staying at home order and those type of things. I think domestic violence might be up slightly, and residential burglaries are down. So I think it's all more because of the COVID-19 stay-at-home orders and stuff that's affecting the crime.
Any questions for Chief Thomas?
Yeah, this is Eric. How is the monitoring of the playgrounds and stuff going?
Well, typically, we wait for a call from somebody that's making a complaint. Other than that, I'll be driving through areas and seeing where there might be some social gathering to break that social gathering up. I know that there's been, I don't know how to, calls, I'm not sure how many calls, to break up parties at homes and those type of things.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else for the chief? Tom? Close check?
Close check.
Thanks, Mayor, here. I just wanted to thank you for putting together the birthday celebrations. I know a lot of kids are inside. They aren't able to have a party or a celebration. So thanks, your officers, for doing that. Really good positive feedback from everybody, so thanks for doing that. And one quick question. Can you guys issue a citation if people gather, or do you guys generally just give a... Because that's the behavior of the group.
We do verbal warnings and ask for voluntary compliance, and it's been working out.
By the way, to comment on Alderman Clistex's statement, Public Works joins the police department in our birthday drive-throughs. And Mr. Vanna was actually in the cherry picker the other day when they went past Walden and Vaughn's house. So he had a lot of courage to do that. They didn't lift the cherry picker, but Brian was in.
Possibly not in the weekends, the Public Works, but during the week, they try to get involved, too?
Well, I would advise, because I had someone send me an email. They said, "My child's birthday is today. How do I do it?" And I said, "You need to arrange those ahead of time." So if you're out there and it's during the week, the birthday falls during the week, or even if it's on a Saturday and you would like us to do something during the week, give us a call, give Mary Belmonte a call, an email at City Hall, and she'll arrange it so that myself or Brian will be part of that. All right. Any questions for Dan for Municipal Services? Mike Corrigan.
Yeah, Dan, I was just curious. Maybe I missed it in the direct connect, but I was surprised this morning. When I got up, I saw Municipal Services doing the brush pickup. I think it's important to remind people that this is the first week for a brush pickup of the year. Like I said, caught me by surprise, but I may have just missed it on direct connect. I didn't attach it last week. But just so people know that it's all this week, I want to remind them.
Correct. And I'm not sure why it was, why you may have missed it, but I know we had advertised it previously as well. We canceled it, and on further review, it was appropriate to move forward with the program. So we did keep it as scheduled.
Dan, I had a resident call me the other day, and she noted that with the snow the other day, she's a single person, she had a hard time getting all the branches out by Sunday night, and she was wondering if we would take that into consideration in terms of extending it this week at all.
The answer is yes. By extending it, you know, we do make a second round. We do have occasionally stragglers, excuse me, due to not being home or missing it. So we're very accommodating to those types of requests. If you want to forward me the address, we'll double-check it to make sure at the end of the second round it is picked up.
I'll get you that name and address tomorrow, yeah. Mary?
Um, I, my block and my neighborhood was packed with branches today, and they actually came through already. And when I was walking the dog, the same thing. And they were making the rounds, and I know people really appreciated it. One of my neighbors, who's right by the park, he collects branches all winter, from the time the pick stops in the fall to now. So he had quite a pile set up. But the guys were out there, and they were social distancing as best as they could. And I appreciate their efforts.
Thank you, Mayor.
The only thing we wanted to make sure and mention is that the piles, you know, from here on out aren't more than two foot high, because it really becomes cumbersome when our crews have to try to dismantle, if you want to say, those branches when they're all intertwined.
Okay. Takes us to the treasurer's report. Michael, you want to read the warrant?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval, warrant number 192025, in the amount of $423,914.56 from the listed funds, payroll for the period ended April the 9th, in the amount of $254,343.04, for a total to be approved of $678,257.60.
Motion to approve. Alderman Bellzah, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Questions? The roll.
Bellzah.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Plistic.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Our monthly report, Mike?
Yes. Monthly report for the 11-months, on March 31st. General Fund, year-to-date revenue of $15,167,904. Expenditures of $11,319,006. Current balance of $4,663,147. Water Fund, year-to-date revenue of $7,724,060. Expenditures of $5,871,387. Current balance of $3,489,919. Motor Fuel Tax Fund, year-to-date revenue of $734,611. Expenditures of $582,504. Current balance of $500,447. Water Depreciation Fund, year-to-date revenue of $19,721. Expenditures of $371,308. Current balance of $2,209,973. And the Capital Improvement Fund, year-to-date revenue of $289,852. Expenditures of $5,123,907. For current balance of $4,203,201.
Any questions for Mike on the monthly report?
Well, we'd just like to remind the aldermen that this is the 11-month report. As you may recall, from last year, the April 30th typically gets postponed because it's our fiscal year-end. So the auditors come in and begin their audit, actually, probably, I think, well, it's supposed to be next week. I'm not sure what the situation, whether it'll be next week to start it or whether it'll be the following week. So the April report will be a little bit delayed. The good news on this report, most of our revenue is held by the state, and we receive it on about a three-month lag. So if you've noticed any of the numbers on this report, the economic impact from the coronavirus has not really hit yet. So it will be interesting to see as it starts moving forward in the next couple of months. But the April report will probably be delayed. But if there's anything important to note, I'll try and let you know as soon as possible, number one. Number two, Mayor, I don't know, did you, you want me to speak about that PPP loan forgiveness? We spoke about it a little bit in the work session.
Would you do that?
While we have the audience. As I mentioned to the mayor, most of you have probably heard that there was a small business loan, so basically a grant of $350 billion that got rolled out just less than two weeks ago. And as of last Thursday, the whole $350 billion was spoken for. It was a very popular program. And from what I understand, some businesses were able to get it funded, others were not, or was in process and approved, but not yet funded. I guess if there's any good news, the latest status of it is Congress is working on getting another $300 billion trying to get approved for that program. So if you have been in the process of applying for it and working with your bank, it's important to continue that process. Continue working with your bank so that at least you stay in line. So in the event that the other $300 billion, which is most likely to get approved, gets approved, that you'll be in line for your share of it. As I mentioned before, it seems like the companies that have had success in getting the funding have gotten it because they've worked with their current banking relationship. It seems like the process is a lot easier and a lot less paperwork because the bank already knows their customer as opposed to going to some bigger bank or some unknown bank to start the process all over again. So I hope that's helpful.
Thank you, Mike. That takes us to standing committee reports. I don't believe there are any, but is there anything that I need to be updated on? The council needs to be updated on? Okay. That takes us to Item 14, questions and comments that are agenda-related. And again, this is an opportunity for the public to make comments or ask questions on any item on the council's agenda. We have a member of our audience here who I think would like to address the council. We have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Timothy Was, I'm a resident of Darien.
Thank you.
I hope that everybody's family and everybody in the city is well under these perilous times.
Thank you.
I wanted to come in and ask this evening about your item U, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution rebating $310,000 of city tax money back to 48 businesses here in this city. And I wanted to ask the aldermen if they knew the identities of all 48 of those businesses, because I read the packet, all 650 pages, and I couldn't find the identities of those businesses in the packet. Do the aldermen know who these businesses are, these 48 individuals? 48 businesses that are going to get the...
I believe we have one alderman who asked for that information.
I supplied that today, but no, the list was not in the packet. It's just those subject, and I could send that out, but it's just those subjects of tax.
We could send that to all the aldermen. It's basically our restaurants and our bars.
Yes. And do the aldermen know the amounts that these businesses are going to receive? These 48, these 48 businesses? Do the aldermen know the amounts that each specific business is going to receive?
No.
Why isn't that part included in the packet?
That information is proprietary.
Okay. The resolution conveniently puts the clause in here that the National Restaurant Association reports that restaurants and employees are feeling the catastrophic, horrific event effect of COVID-19, blah, blah, blah. Okay? Yeah, they are, and so is everybody else. Okay? So they're not the only ones that are affected. I just would like to see some transparency with $310,000 of city money that's going to be distributed to unknown parties. I don't think that asks too much. Where's $310,000 going to go? I just, makes me want to ask the question. I don't know why that transparency isn't here. You state that the information is proprietary in the ordinance, in the resolution. It states that the information is proprietary. It also states that recognizing that we have limited resources to financially assist businesses. And yes, you may have limited resources, but the fact is, you have $310,000 that you folks can determine where this money goes, not just discriminately aiming. I'd like to know, are all the businesses, restaurants and bars, that are going to receive this money? Are all the 48 businesses that are going to receive this money, restaurants or bars?
Whoever collects and pays the tax to the city.
My question is, are all of those businesses, restaurants or bars, the recipients of the money?
I'll give you, I can read the list. I mean, that's fine, I just sent it out. I'll read through this. Alchele, Mexican Grill, Alpine, Idoke, Baba Grove, Baskin, Blueberry Hill, Brewster's, Bona, Crazy Burrito, Carriage Greens, Chiba, Chuck E. Cheese, Culvers, Darian Chap Suey, Daddys, very, yeah, Dry, I'm sorry, Joni's, Dry Dock, The Two Dunkin' Donuts Stores, Home Run Inn, Jam and Jelly, Jimmy John's, The McDonald's, Mi Hacienda, Miskatonic, Old Villaness Cafe, Hand Express, Sushi, Patio Restaurant, Popeye's Chicken, Q Bar, Rosati's, Starbucks Steak Shake, Stella's Subway, Subway Talk About, and Tyson's, Teddy's Red Hots, T G Fridays, Uncle Ma's, Lottis Kitchenette, Wendy's, and Zaz's.
Okay, does the city collect, does the city collect this tax, this food and beverage tax from Walmart? It doesn't, so they don't pay a food, they don't pay a beverage tax on alcohol that's sold in this?
They don't pay on the tax that was cited, the local food and beverage tax.
Was imposed upon the retail purchase of alcoholic liquor, food, or beverage at any retail food facility or retail liquor facility within the city. Does that language include Walmart? Like, is the way I interpret it?
Some Walmarts not in there, you have to look at the specific language in the ordinance. The places on the list are the ones reported.
Okay, so we're going to bail out McDonald's too with this, right? This, this $310. And when?
If you have a question or comment, you should get to that because that's not?
My comment is, my comment is that these are very uncertain times. Everybody's going to be affected by this coronavirus. There's no light at the end of the tunnel as I see it. Things aren't going to magically just open up here on May 1st or on whatever particular day. We don't know what we're dealing with. You folks have the discretion to give this money away at a later date and to prioritize it at perhaps a later point in time. And that's what I'd like to see. I'd also like to see it.
Mr. Woz, your pleasure, sir.
Thank you. I'd also like to see where this money's going to go. And if you folks don't know where it's going, I don't see how any of you can vote for it not knowing who's going to get how much. Thank you.
You were just told the restaurants and bars that are going to get it, sir.
Yes, yes, sir. Who's going to get it and how much each specific person is going, each entity is going to get.
They're going to get what they paid in, sir.
They didn't pay, they collected the money for this, this is city tax revenue, sir. It's not their money.
Between May 1st, last year.
Yes, at the end of October, they paid 1.25% food and beverage tax. We know how much each one paid, they will get that amount. Right, I understand your position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please consider my thoughts.
That takes us to old business.
One clarification before we get to that. There are places, McDonald's as an example, our franchise, it's not McDonald's corporate, it's a sole owned, you might own this McDonald's, maybe some others, but it's not a corporate McDonald's.
And just to clarify that even further, when I made phone calls to several of these businesses to see how they were going to use the money, I had to call corporate offices. For instance, the Patio Restaurant is a corporate office. I talked to the owner of the Patio Restaurants, who happened to own the one restaurant that's in Darien. So I did have to do that. Sometimes I could call the business and get the owner, other times I had to talk, I had to call a corporate office. I just want to make the council aware of that. I think I put that in my emails to you so you understood who I was contacting.
Mayor?
Yes?
Mayor, I think the important concept here is the reason these businesses are being singled out is they also provide one of the largest shares of revenue to the city. So by keeping them going, it'll hopefully continue that revenue stream going forward in the future. They generate both, not only our food and beverage tax, which is the portion we're generating and returning to them, but also a large amount of sales tax on all the individual sales.
Correct, thank you, Mike. It takes old business, there being no old business, it takes us to our consent agenda. There is no consent agenda. It takes us to new business. Item A, under new business. Consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance approving the 2020, 2021 budget. Motion to approve. Alderman Sullivan, second by Alderman Bellzak, and a discussion. For the sake of the viewing public, Brian, do we want to mention the cuts that we made or what we made?
You know, if somebody wants to look at that, I would suggest if they open the budget, the cover memo to the budget, page two of that has, shows the listing. Obviously, you know, we talked about this and mentioned at the public hearing. You know, this has never happened ever to any of us where you've pretty much concluded a budget and then you've had to make so many revisions. But in lieu of reading just, you know, over the Zoom, if anybody wants to see those cuts, they are just itemized. And some of those cuts, I'll call, are just a punt. You know, some of the, some of the vehicles we held off and some of the things we are rescheduling to the next year and others are not, like we're not doubling up on the road program next year as an example. But the three-year budget that is up for approval tonight, just it shows all those over the three-year period.
Okay, any questions from the aldermen? Just require any comments you'd like to make?
No, not at this time.
Alderman Bellzak?
I just think it might be beneficial if yourself or Brian read the memo at the beginning of the budget that kind of explains a little bit more as to what we've done to try to prepare for the COVID-19 reduction in our budget.
All right, I'll read that. This was to the mayor and the city council from Mr. Vanna. It states, "This year's budget process is one of the most, is one most of us have never experienced before. After several public budget meetings, staff prepared a draft budget with the minor modification discussed at said meetings. I am now recommending approval of a budget significantly different from the previous draft due to the impact of the coronavirus and what it's having on our economy. While I have full confidence the economy will bounce back, there is an immediate effect on the city's financial projections. As of now, the financial data of the short-term impact on city finances is not yet known. But I anticipate most municipalities are going to implement a much more conservative spending plan for the 2020, 2021 budget year. The attached draft budget includes the changes discussed with the council during the budget meetings. I've also revised the fiscal year 20 estimated actual revenue resulting in a reduced estimated revenue of $628,232. Additionally, Mayor Marques and I are recommending additional budget reductions contained in the attached list titled "Suggested Revision Fiscal Year Ending 21," which is exhibit one. Some of these reductions will result in long-term savings while others will simply be a deferred expense until the next fiscal year. A summary of the reductions are included on exhibit one. The revisions total $3,627,419 in all funds. Additionally, since the financial impact on revenues in the fiscal year ending 4/30/21 is unknown, I increased the general fund balance by approximately $550,000 to cushion impacts during the fiscal year. We will be analyzing the budget impacts monthly and recommending any changes based on the financials." Any questions? I have a motion, I'm second, have the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Bellzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract for the 2020 landscape maintenance services within 75th Street right-of-ways, clock tower, and eight entranceway planting beds between the city of Darien and the Seabert Landscaping Company in an amount not to exceed $65,848 and authorize a contingency in the amount of $5,500 for replacement of plant materials and plant enhancements. Motion to approve. Alderman Bellzak, second by Alderman Gustafson. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Bellzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Item C, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the city of Darien. Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, second by Alderman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Bellzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Christopher B. Burke Engineering for the professional design services related to the construction layout services for a geometrical reconfiguration of 67th Street adjacent to the Westman Way at Clarton Hills Road in an amount not to exceed $10,000. Motion to approve. Alderman Sullivan, second? There being no second, the motion fails. Item E, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a contract for the 2020 concrete sidewalk apron and curb and gutter removal and replacement program with suburban concrete in an amount not to exceed $652,920 and to waive the residential $75 permit fee application for concrete work. Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, second? There being no second, the motion fails. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract extension with Thenmore Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $189,238.63 for the 2020 track fill program. Motion to approve. Alderman, Alderman Sullivan, second? No second, motion fails. Item G, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract for the 2020 Emerald Ash Bore Treatment Plan with Robert Canouk and Tree Experts and Landscaping Company in an amount not to exceed $118,225 and to approve a contingency in an amount not to exceed $5,000 as it relates to the ash trees. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, second by Alderman Kenny. Questions or comments? Alderman Bellzak?
I know we've talked about this municipal services and it's a lot of money. Is there any, why are we going forward with this, this year rather than postponing this a year as well?
Mr. Gombach?
It's really unknown, I mean, from science that's out there, from studies that are out there, it is highly suggested that we move forward with the Emerald, with an application of the pesticide for the Emerald Ash Bore. I mean, our inventory currently is very priceless at best with the amount of ash trees that we have. So again, it's, you know, can we? I can't tell you yes or no. I mean, it's a gamble that we would take, but it's a gamble I would not rather take a stake in.
Any other questions for Dan? If none, the roll.
Shower?
He said aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Bellzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Item H, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving nine rear yard drainage assistance projects in an amount not to exceed $99,665 of city funds. Motion to approve. Alderman Vaughn, second? There is no second, the motion dies as a result of no second. Item I, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Superior Road Striping Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $34,500 for the 2020 street striping program. Motion to approve. Alderman, Alderman Bellzak, second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Item J, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the 2020 street maintenance project between the city of Darien and Schroeder Asphalt Services Incorporated. The following schedule of pricing, base bid $1,248,878.45. Alternate one, patching $84,600. Alternate two, aggregate shoulders $25,600. Alternate three, 67th Street whitening, which is $69,259.50 for a total of $1,428,337.95. Motion to approve. Alderman Bellzak, second? There being no second, the motion fails. Item K, consideration of a motion to approve a resolutions for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code 2021 Motor Fuel Tax General Maintenance IDA. Motion to approve. Alderman Sullivan, seconded by? I need a second? Alderman Shower? Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Bellzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion passes, item L, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution awarding a contract to Homer Tree Care Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $147,000 for the city's 2021 tree trimming and removal program. Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, second? There being no second, the motion fails. Item M, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution to enter into a contract agreement with Compass Minerals America Incorporated for the purchase of Rock Salt in an amount not to exceed $206,179.24. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Bellzak?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion is approved. Item N, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Darien and the Darien Park District for Rock Salt. Motion to approve. Motion to approve. Alderman Bellzak, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Bellzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion passes. Item O. Consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Darien and Center Castle District 66 for Rock Salt. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Questions or comments? None, the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Bellzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion is approved. Item P. Consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance granting a series of variations to allow the construction of electronic message boards signed at the northwest corner of Plainfield and Cass. Motion to approve. Alderman Bellzak, seconded by Alderman Gustafson. Alderman, Alderman Sullivan.
I'd just like to bring up a point. As noted in the agenda packet, the intent of the city was to have a community digital network to provide a new communication tool for events, public meetings, alerts throughout the year, placed at a prominent corner, and could create additional civic engagement as it has proven in other communities. I just do not believe that this current proposition will achieve that since it really gives up our control over what would be put on the sign, and it really would be more of an advertising tool versus a community engagement tool. And I think with the duration of the contract with Buffalo Billboard, even though, you know, they would put together a very nice-looking stone landscape space, I feel like a 20-plus year commitment with them and us not having control over what really goes on the sign makes me believe that that's just not the right thing for that corner at this time.
Any other comments?
I thought the original agreement was 20 years, and I'm looking at it now and it's 25. It's not much difference five years from what I remember, but why are we going to put... why are we going to put our, you know, advertising in the hands of somebody else for over 20 years to begin with? That's one of those questions that just keeps coming up. That's one question that I have. The other question that I have is, what's going to stop them from not advertising for other businesses outside of Darien? I guess... is that addressed in the contract?
When they talked about this with us, Ted, they talked a lot about how they usually don't receive advertising on their other signs from any business that's probably outside a one-to-one-and-a-half-mile limit of the sign. They said the large stores like the Pete's Fresh Market, or the Home Depots, or Walmarts would not be advertising on this sign. They don't normally get advertising from those entities. They get it more or less from the smaller businesses. So while there's no language that guarantees they won't accept a Pete's Fresh Market, their past history of having these signs in other communities, it serves as some evidence that you're only going to get contracts for advertising from local businesses. Alderman Vaughn. Go ahead, Lester.
I'd also like to add that it will cost us $250,000 if we did it ourselves. So this company's coming in, they're doing it for us. I think it's added value to the businesses that are in the community that can advertise, that will have an opportunity to market their business on this sign. So I think it's added value. I don't think it's a takeaway, but I think it'll be good for the city. But if we did it ourselves, we'd be paying $250,000 to do it, so I'd key that in mind.
I wanted to let the council know that. With the sign, you get the brick wall, you get the landscaping, you get the maintenance of the landscaping, you get the water element, you get that. If you don't approve the sign, you don't get anything on that corner. You'll view simply a drive-through going around to the entrance of Dunkin' Donuts. Now, personally, if you voted down the sign tonight, I would like the council to consider something similar to what Willowbrook has on the corner of Route 83 and Plainfield Road. It does say Willowbrook Town Center, but I would like something like that that would say "City of Darien" with landscaping, something that would serve as an entryway minus the sign. So if you voted this down tonight, I'd like you sometime in the future to consider that because I think that's an entryway into the city. If you object to a large message board, then I think that sometime in the future, I'd like you to consider the brick wall with the "City of Darien" on it with the landscaping. Now, you would have to pay for that. The city would have to pay 20... Mr. Gombach, tell me if I'm wrong, that's like $25,000 to $35,000 for something like that.
That's a good estimate, and again, you know, I would probably bank on $30,000, you know, pending on the final architecture and the plantings, and keep in mind, there's also maintenance that goes along with it on an annual basis, pending on, you know, what type of seasons we would like to represent with the flowers and/or scrubs.
So you need to be reminded of that because I think that if you vote this down tonight, that I don't think it would be right to come back and say, "Well, fine $30,000 when we're cutting 3.6 million from our budget to build a wall and landscaping." So in effect, voting no tonight, voting down the sign, you're basically going to have a project that's going to go up on that corner, probably with maybe a few bushes or something on that corner. Just to let your council know, that's what, you know, you're voting on that because as Alderman Vaughn said, you get the sign, but you also get the landscaping, you get the maintenance of the landscaping, you get the water treatment, and you get the, their maintenance of that whole project. So I just want to make sure the council understands that. You ready?
But, and obviously aesthetically, you know, it would be an improvement for some part of that, to have that on the corner, but we also would be giving away our control over what goes on a sign since the way it's digitally projected, only one out of eight or nine views would be relative to the city. So it really would no longer be a community digital network providing communication tools for our community. If nonprofits wanted to have something listed, they would have to purchase space on there, and we would have no control over what paid advertisers would be on the sign. So, and that would be for 25 years. So I feel it's something, it would be nice to have something on the corner similar to other gateways into the city, which is one that appears right behind Joe Kenny right now, an image of one, and some landscaping. And doing the easement gives us the ability to do that even if it isn't this year or next year, but perhaps some negotiation or discussion can commence with the builders of the new site that, you know, maybe some type of deal can be struck with them since they're going to be on the property already and building a new building.
Mr. Gombach, could you respond to that?
Well, several elements that Alderman Sullivan addressed, so if I may take a moment to rephrase the questions or ask Alderman Sullivan to rephrase the questions that he's specifically looking for, I think that'd be more appropriate.
I guess bottom line is, would there be any way to discuss with the builder of the new building at Brookhaven Plaza, since the facade is going to be built to be similar to the town center across the way, the fountain area, to do what kind of deal we could possibly strike with them about building some type of structure on the corner which would be a City of Darien sign?
Yeah. Number one, I think that's a possibility. To what point are we looking at for a contribution from him or co-sharing, if you want to say? I don't have that answer. I mean, right now, the expense is totally on Chicago Billboard, so will Mr. Manos and the LLC be acceptable to additional cost to a point? You know, I really could not answer that at this point.
I guess my point is just to go down that road with them and see if there could be savings on building a structure, even if it was savings directly to the city of Darien because things will be being built on that site, or possibly some type of cost sharing with Brookhaven Plaza's owners.
And I guess my first question is, what type of structure are we looking at? Are we looking at a simple monumental sign? Are we looking at, as Mayor Marquez had referred to, a water feature with a, you know, a welcome sign as well? You know, so that's a little bit of an unknown at this point without a concept that I can, you know, entertain with them.
Let's, I think that we're voting on it, we're voting on an item tonight, we need to concentrate on that item. I think if this item fails tonight, then what we need to do is we need to come back, and we need to give the council options in terms of where we would go in the future and how much that would cost. Let's do that. Any other questions about the sign? If none, then let's have the roll.
Bellzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Shower?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Clistic?
Nay.
Kenny?
No.
I have three ayes and four nays.
Okay, so the motion fails. The items Q and R are tied to item P. So when you vote on these, you need to take that into consideration. Item Q is completion, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing an easement agreement at the northwest corner of Cass Avenue and Plainfield Road. Motion to approve. I need a motion. Alderman Vaughn, I need a second. Alderman Gustafson. Roll.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Bellzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
No.
Shower?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Four ayes and three nays.
I think, just so everybody's clear, whoever was voting no on the sign, I thought would vote no on that because it's related to the sign.
Right.
I'm not sure that everybody understood that.
Item, item R. Item Q, excuse me, is meaningless without item P.
It would have to be renegotiated.
Alderman, I think, I think Tom, maybe one is Tom, if you want to reconsider that.
Yeah, Tom, would you want to reconsider your vote because you voted no on the original one?
He's muted.
Tom Clistic.
This is, this is for the easement, right? This is so that you have access?
No, no. The one that's the easement is item S.
Oh, okay, sure.
So you're changing your vote to no?
Yes.
Okay. Joanne?
Okay, we have three ayes and four nays.
Okay, so item Q is defeated, and again, item R is also tied to item P. Item R is consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a digital sign agreement within a dedicated easement at northwest corner at 7532 Cass Avenue. Motion to approve. Alderman Gustafson, second. Alderman Bellzak, the roll.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Bellzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
No.
Shower?
No.
Kenny?
No.
Clistic?
Um, nay.
Three ayes and four nays.
Okay, item R, guys. Item S, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a 25-foot public utility and drainage easement at the northwest corner of 7532 Cass Avenue. This is the easement that you would need to build anything on that corner in the future. Motion to approve. Alderman Sullivan, seconded. Alderman Gustafson, discussion.
Sorry. Mayor Marquez?
Yes.
25-foot easement is separate. That's a totally different easement, not related to the signage, by no means. This is for a 25-foot easement that's adjacent to the property, parallel with Plainfield Road and the development.
But we would need this if we build anything on that corner.
No, no, this is entirely separate. This is accepting a plan of easement for water, water and storm sores strictly.
We need this anyway.
Yes.
How does this impact our wanting to build something in the future? It doesn't.
It has nothing to do with any type of signage on the corner and/or any of our rights on the corner. Everything we approved already has been rejected.
Okay.
So we would need to meet with Mr. Manos?
Right. In other words, then, what Mr. Manos is saying, and Dan, back this up, we would need to meet with Manos separately if we had plans in the future to put something on that corner.
That is correct, be a renegotiated type of deal.
Okay. Which we could go along with what Alderman Sullivan's saying with some concept designs for what might go on that corner. The cost sharing is possible. Okay. We have a motion, a second? We have a vote?
Sullivan?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Bellzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
A motion passes. Item T, which is on the agenda, will be voted on at our May meeting. We told the Nantucket Basin people that we would be voting on it in May, so that item is not on the agenda. Item U, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a rebate of the city of Darien food and beverage tax for tax collected from May 1st through October 2019. Motion to approve. Alderman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Bellzak. Questions or comments? I think that I will mention that Alderman Bellzak asked, are we going to show a reduction in revenue as a base, as a result of this? And Mr. Manos, I think he answered him, and I'll let him answer again. Brian?
Yeah, there was, the answer was, we would charge that to the $500,000 economic development fund we have, and then, again, as we're monitoring the budget throughout the year, we'll see how the other revenues and things come in. There's still a chance, you know, that revenues or expenses will shift a little, and we'll monitor it, but at least for now, the plan would be to take it out of that.
Dan, the other question we had is, what about if these businesses don't reopen? Right now, what we would do is we would notify these businesses, and they would have to reopen to be able to get that money. If the governor says that restaurants are allowed to open May 15th or May 21st or June 1st, then what we would do is we would contact the business, and all of these, for the most part, with the exception of two that I know of, are currently operating. of, are currently operating. And the ones I called all anticipate being open when the governor gives his approval. So it would be contingent upon the governor saying, this is when restaurants and bars can open with restrictions or whatever, and the fact that they actually do reopen. So they would have to meet those two criteria to get these funds. Any other questions? Alderman Gustafson?
Yeah, and I think some of the comments you got from them were that they were going to use the funds to buy inventory in order to open.
Correct.
Correct.
When I talked to
They take the money and then they decide later on not to open. I mean, do we have a way of getting our money back?
Well, they'll be open.
They will be open. They're only going to get the money
They need the funds upfront before you even know they're going to open because they need it for product.
They're opening, they're open now, Eric. In other words, there's two businesses that are currently closed. If those two businesses don't open, they won't get the money. We will, we're going to contact these, I've been calling these businesses.
There's a couple that are closed.
There are a couple that are closed. I think we, we won't mention those, but there are a couple that are closed. But every one of them that I've spoken to indicates that they're going to open.
Okay.
Mary?
I think the intent too, Eric, just to clarify, since many of them, the majority of them are open, is obviously they would need to bring in a lot more product with the hope of having dining rooms open and obviously a bigger flow of customers. And also to rehire people that have been furloughed or laid off because they haven't needed the manpower until they're, you know, up and operating, you know, full speed.
I mean, are they going to need to stay open for a period of time to keep the funds? I mean, can they just open for a month and then close?
No, we can't, we can't specify that, Eric. What I'd like to do is share some of the, I sent these quotes to you, but I'd like, for the sake of the audience, for residents to hear this, I talked to one of the family owners of the Patio Restaurants. And her name is Janet Koleopolis. And we talked on the phone and I asked her if she would give me a quote that I could read. Her comment was, "I was overwhelmed with gratitude regarding your response to the small business community of Darien during the COVID-19 pandemic. What a wonderful gesture to refund part of the food and beverage tax restaurants paid to the village. As a small business owner, we sometimes feel government regards us as the enemy, but not the city and administration of Darien. You are trying to make sure we stay afloat and continue as partners as we weather this storm together. What a wonderful place to live and to own a business. I know we can, we'll come through this most stressful time because of the backing of your leadership and the entire leadership of the City of Darien." And the other individual I talked to was Mike Barocco of Zazzo's Pizza. Mike says, "Zazzo's Pizza has been part of this community for many years. Supporting this community has always been a top priority in our eyes. When this unprecedented circumstances came through Darien, we did not know what to expect. As a business in this community, I know we will get through this together, come out stronger than ever. With the continued support and backing of Darien and our customers, words cannot explain our feelings. When Mayor Marquez told us that he would be giving us a check towards helping us get back on our feet, we were speechless. We could not hold back tears of excitement, knowing that we can see light at the end of the tunnel. We want to thank you so very much for helping out the local businesses. We have a saying here, treat everyone like family. And that is exactly how we feel in this community." Which I think are two beautiful quotes or expressions of how these businesses feel. And again, when I called these businesses, I told them it was all contingent on your approval tonight. I didn't tell them this was a given. I told them that this was something the city council had to vote on and it was contingent on that vote. I also talked to Jim Pine, who does all the accounting for his brother Chuck at Chuck's Seven Comfort. Jim was very grateful. I talked to Brewster's, I talked to Teddy's Red Hots, I've talked to, today I was over at Jimmy John's, I talked to them. Every one of them looks at you like you're, you're crazy. They're so, they can't believe that a city is going to offer them this opportunity. And they all say that they're going to use the money to restock. Jim Pine said that they're completely diminished in terms of their inventory. What they would do is they'd have to go out and they would have to buy new inventory. And they've all basically have said the same thing. Janet Koleopolis of Patio said, "They're currently operating at one-third with one-third of their employees. They have two-thirds furloughed. So they'd be helping to hire back employees and this money would help them hire those employees back." So there's a lot of ways they would be using this money. And again, as Treasurer Corrin said, not only do they, these 48 businesses produce this revenue through the food and beverage tax, they also pay a significant amount of money in sales tax revenue and they generate a lot of income to the City of Darien. So keeping them in business is a good thing. Anyone have anything they'd like to add? If none, then Alderman Plistic.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to quickly say, good job of reaching out to all the businesses and speaking with them firsthand. Just shows the leadership that you did there as well. And, and one thing I just want to quickly point out that maybe no one mentioned, that when we're refunding these tax dollars back to the businesses, we're not going through a bank. You know, the PPP process that the federal government did, you were going through a bank. So there's money, you know, 2% taken of taxpayer dollars into banks to redistribute that money. We're here, we're just giving it right back to where it came from. So there's no loss in taxpayer dollars from, from that sense. And then there's none of this paperwork that you have with PPP, that you have to fill out this application and this and that. So I, I think those, those are two critical points that will differentiate what we're doing here in Darien versus the federal program that has a little bit more bureaucracy and paperwork. And as you can see in the news, and again, there are a lot of frustration from other businesses. So that's just, I want to mention there, so.
Anything else? Then the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Plistic? Plistic?
He says aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion passes. We'll be on communication with these businesses starting tomorrow. I believe we also will have a press release that'll go out. So you will be seeing that. Takes us to questions and comments and announcements of the gentleman injured. Do you have anything they'd like to share with the council? Alderman Kenny? Alderman Vaughn? Sullivan, sorry. Mary?
Oh, thank you. I did get some very positive feedback on the videos that have been released. I know a lot of work went into that collectively. And I think it's important that we emphasize this was something that was started many, many months ago. It's not something that just got with together in the last week or during this crisis. The majority of the work was completed before we ever, you know, really imagined COVID-19 would come to the United States, let alone our community. But excellent work. I think it's important to stress that Darien is, even though it is a smaller community, it does have lots of schools, lots of places of worship, lots of stores, lots of restaurants. And by no means could everything be featured in the video. It was meant to be a sampling of our vast, varietal community. So, you know, if your school wasn't pictured or your church or your favorite, you know, restaurant, do not be offended. We were just trying to, I think, provide a variety to give, you know, the outsiders, because we're already here. We already think it's a good place to live because we live here. The outsider is coming here for business or for, to move here. And then lastly, I just want to, you know, a really heartfelt thank you to everybody at City Hall, Mayor Marquez, Brian Vanna, the, you know, staff that's working, that's coming in every day and doing their due diligence to keep our city running so smoothly. All of the leadership, Dan Gondak, and everybody at Municipal Services. It warmed my heart today when I was walking the dog and I saw one of the birthday parades. At first I was alarmed. The dog was barking because of all the noise. And then I realized what it was. And I was waving and honking, you know, my pretend honk because it was, it was just really sweet. And I think the police departments, I see them up and down all the time when I'm out and about walking and riding a bike. And Chief, I think you're doing a great job. So just thank you so much for our city support team because we're getting through this because of you.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else? What I, just to comment on something, Mary, so I think we need to give thanks to LK Media, who worked on both the videos. I know that every time we got a draft copy, we made comments and we sent that back and Al would come back again with another draft until we finally got to the point where everything was approved. So thank you, Al, for your patience with us. We think the final versions are excellent. We know it was a lot of hard work, but we think that it's well worth it. And again, as Mary said, I've had nothing but compliments given to us as a city based on both those videos. So thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Vaughn?
I just wanted to thank the city council for taking under consideration my thoughts. And I understand why you voted the way you did. And as a small business owner myself, it's very challenging these days. I don't think that one business is more challenged than another, quite honestly. And I hope that everybody stays safe, stays healthy, stays in. And I hope Mr. Vanna could make the list of these potential people that are going to receive this, that number of these monies. Mr. Vanna could make that list at least, even if you cannot provide me the amounts. Can you provide me the list?
Yeah, just fill out the request and we'll get
Just fill out the request. Okay. All right. Thank you and good night.
With that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Shower. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. It was great to see all of you. If you get, hey, by the way, I still have three shirts in my office. And I think one of them is Mr. Corrin. So please, somebody come pick up those shirts sometime. Stop by and come visit. As Mary says, we're here every day. We don't mind your stopping by. Take care.